And following that, the salute to the New Mexico state flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the deassemble of perfect friendship among united cultures. I would like to welcome everyone here tonight. We have some town administration with us. We have our manager, Alex Brown, our town attorney, Jim Reynolds, our interim assistant town manager, Jackie Olaya, our police chief, Portillo, our fire chief, Lambert, our code enforcement officers, Vicky Tony, and we have Officer Howdy with us tonight. I would also like to welcome members of the press and also members of the community. The first item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does any council member want to make changes to the agenda? No changes. Next is ceremonies. Next is agenda item dealing with the town of Silver City Employee of the Month. And Mr. Brown, I think you wanted Chief Lambert to handle this?
Yes, sir.
Then I'll ask Chief Lambert and city council members to join us to join us at the podium.
Mayor, council. We instituted a resolution to put into place an employee recognition program at the beginning of January. And so at the beginning of this month, we held our department head meeting and I recommended that we nominate Vicky Tony for employee of the month. Her job in code enforcement is consistently bring to light possible negative situations or things that need correction. And I feel that she consistently looks for ways to perform her routine duties with professionalism and compassion. When issues arise outside of just code enforcement, she consistently takes steps to improve upon city process, to fix ordinances and make them enforceable, but she consistently, again, maintains fairness. She interfaces with the public in a lot of situations that could be deemed negative, but she maintains her composure and her level-headedness with a lot of grace and compassion. And I think she was a model employee for employee of the month, and we voted that that be so. So, Vicky.
I thank everyone here, council, my bosses, everybody, the town. I want to thank my mom and my grandma for instilling work ethic in me and the town for giving me a job I love.
Officer Tony has made tremendous progress when it comes to enforcing the ordinances in Silver City. And I want to thank you very much for, you're always willing to work with me when I report a property or some issue with you. And I'd like to give each council member an opportunity to say a few words, starting with Councilor Conno.
Officer Tony, you are invaluable to me. I think I talk to you almost as much as I talk to Mr. Brown because it seems like there's always something that I need to ask you about. And your knowledge of ordinances and your ability to explain a process in a better way so that I can go explain it to the public has been so helpful. I appreciate the fact that you're always in a good mood, even after somebody's been not as nice as they could have been. It rubs off on me and I appreciate that. So, thank you for all you do for the town.
Officer Tony, you have eased the suffering of so many folks in my district. Your efforts to be able to reach out, calmly, easily communicate over what the needs are, and make sure that we can get to better outcomes without having to resort to this, some of the scary stuff we always have to see and hear about from government has been exceptional. Thank you from me and my constituents.
Thank you, Officer Tony. You've always been very responsive and when you go to the situation, it's always handled very well and keeps it mellow. And thank you very much for your service to the town.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to say other than everybody's pretty much said all these good, nice things about you, Tony. I met you when I first got appointed back in May and felt really comfortable going to you on issues. Like the mayor said earlier, anytime that I have or something's brought up to me, you're just a phone call away. If you don't answer, you typically return the phone call pretty quickly. I just appreciate it. Having worked with the previous code enforcement, some other issues, it's not an easy job. And thank you for your service.
I'm just curious, do you take pictures of properties before and after? It would be great, I think, if you put all that together in some sort of presentation and because you've made tremendous difference in this town, you and your staff. Thank you. Next is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council comments, and first on the list tonight is Councilor Conno.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I want to talk about is Grant County Day at the legislature. We all attended that. And it was a very good event. I just want to thank the Grant County prospectors. They always put on a day of important meetings. This year, it was, as has been in the last few years, there were way too many people and not enough space in the room, which is always a good problem to have. That means that Grant County cares about being at the legislature and making sure that our voices are heard. It was a pretty, what's the word I'm looking for? I guess successful day is a good way to look at it. I know there were several of us that got some of the needs met that we needed at the legislature and are going to keep working on projects. So, that was great. So, again, thank you to the prospectors. I see Mr. Ashburn in the audience. He's one of them. They work really hard all year long to make sure that happens. So, thank you all. I want to talk about the warming center. The warming center continues to be open during nights where there is extreme cold, and that's under 40 degrees. We were closed for a couple of days on the weekend because it was warmer, but this week it looks like it's going to be cold again, so it will be open. The warming center continues to be a very successful location, I guess is what we're going to call it, for the unhoused and for other people who are having issues with warming. Like, we had a woman who had her firewood stolen, so she's been going in the evening to warm up there. We average right now about 38 to 40 people a night, which is actually kind of a lot. That's a good thing, though. We're happy to have that many people there. It is a successful thing. I know that there have been some rumors in town. We've been hearing about them the past couple of days. We've had a lot of comparisons to other locations. I would just invite anyone who thinks that there might be an issue to come and visit the warming center, to spend some time there, to talk to the coordinator, Tiffany Lindsay, who is running the place right now, and just have a conversation and learn a little bit about what's going on because it's a completely different concept from what has been in the community before, and it's working in a different way. Something that I'm really proud of this week is that two of our guests have found jobs. So, they are trying to better their lives. Things are getting better for them, and so we're really proud of them for that. And we're hoping that that desire to improve will kind of rub off on some of the others, and maybe they'll find some employment, too, which is a great start for moving on from the warming center. Along with that, I spend, I do the Friday night overnight shift there, and one of the evenings, we had an issue where we had to call law enforcement. It was because someone was there that wasn't supposed to be there and knew they weren't supposed to be there, but was still there. I just want to thank Sergeant Laramore and Patrolman Singleton, who responded to that call. They were just so kind and compassionate in their response. They both went above and beyond. After they dealt with that situation, they had a situation where we had a missing person who showed up at the warming center. They were dealing with the missing person issue, but, you know, it was a complicated matter. Patrolman Singleton was above and beyond what he needed to be. He was compassionate. He was kind of the family. He was kind of the person who was actually choosing to be missing at that point. Just the way both of them handled themselves really stood out to me as that's the kind of officer that I'm really thankful that we have. So, if you would share with them, I would very appreciative of them. I would appreciate that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Snyder.
I also attended Grant County Days in Santa Fe. The Grant County prospectors were very organized for this event. In 2024, the Grant County prospectors obtained more than $17 million in funding for Grant County with numerous recipients in Grant County. Since the legislature is still in session, it is unknown the amount that we'll receive this year, but I'm sure it will be a success. I'd like to thank the prospectors for all they do for Grant County. The other thing I was going to bring up, I spent some time trying to figure out the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. And I'd like to share with you what I've concluded. A resolution is a desire to action and ten or stated position. An ordinance is a binding legal regulation which is enforceable, a law. However, it cannot override state or federal laws. A resolution is usually temporary while an ordinance is permanent. The process to enact an ordinance is more complex. First, a notice of intent is voted on. And if it is voted down, the process stops. If it passes, there is a 14-day public comment period. It is voted on then again. A resolution is voted on immediately. In summary, the main difference is the level of commitment. If you're all in and want a permanent ordinance, if you're less committed and you want it temporarily, a resolution.
Thank you. Councilor Bingcom.
I have my own.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll hold my remarks. Oh, Councilor Prince, I'm sorry.
I just wish to thank Mr. Ashburn as well as the rest of the new prospectors that we have here this evening. This year's Grant County Day event was phenomenal, and being able to go up to the legislature and speak to the issues that matter most to my constituents wouldn't be possible without the efforts of the prospectors. So, thank you very much. To keep it short this evening, even though it's just for the county, but Silver City is a part of Grant County, the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan update is currently running, and I would highly recommend all those in attendance and in audience to go to grantcountynm.gov and review this year's 2025 draft. It's about 385 pages, but if you're concerned about drought, fire, flood, hail, wind, lightning, it's covering all of the bases for what we're going to be looking at for strategizing for our community's safety, not just for Silver City, but for all of our neighboring communities and into the county lands. Grantcountynm.gov. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Prince. Next is item six, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Snyder.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
Councilor Bingcom, thank you. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is public input, and I see that 10 people have signed up for public input. And I would like to remind those of providing input that by council resolution, there's a five-minute limit at council meetings, and I'll notify you when there's one minute remaining. First on the list tonight is Patricia Erickson.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Press that button right on top there.
Right here, the white one? Okay, there we go. Is that better? All right. Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Ladner, fellow Silver Cityans. My name is Patricia Erickson. I am a Grant County native. I've lived at my current address for over 40 years. I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor, and I'm here to talk about an issue that I believe affects quality of life and something that a citizens advisory board would go a long way towards improving. I recently had an issue where I was cited into municipal court by an animal control officer because my dog was off lead. And precipitating situation was that I had seen this city truck on multiple occasions speeding on the street outside my house. And on November 25th, I raised my voice and said, "Slow down." I bent over to hook the lead on my dog's collar. Before I knew it, the vehicle had made a very rapid U-turn in the street, came back, and stopped in the travel lane of the street. My dog, being very friendly, even though she was badly abused before my late husband and I adopted her in 2015 from the shelter where she was spayed, thought this was a visitor, ran out to greet the visitor, stepped into the street. An animal control officer exited the vehicle and yelled at me, telling me that I was going to be cited because my dog was off lead. Things developed so that I was cited into municipal court. At that hearing, the officer could provide no evidence of any prior contact with me. I told him I had no memory of ever seeing him before, and he said that he had searched the CAD system because he knew that he had talked to me at least once or more times previously, but he could not find that evidence. And the only evidence for the allegation of the dog being off, of having had contact with me before was his word. There were two other alleged violations. One was harboring an unvaccinated animal, and the other was harboring an unspayed or unneutered animal. And shelter staff told me that it's routine for them to receive requests for information from animal control. So, I took my proof to municipal court. Those charges were dropped. But I was found guilty of having my dog off the lead and given a 90-day deferred sentence. I paid off the $25 deferment fee via volunteer service at the Humane Society thrift shop, where I regularly volunteer. I believe that this situation could have been handled differently. I believe that those who are charged with enforcing the law should themselves obey it. A couple of weeks after that incident, I called central dispatch again and reported the same vehicle speeding on the same street. So, this took a great deal of my time, and it was difficult to work through court procedures and prepare for the hearing. I hope that we can do a better job of communicating about these issues and that a citizens advisory board would facilitate positive communication among citizens, regardless of their affiliation or occupation, and provide a productive mechanism for addressing the broad spectrum of issues, large and small, that we must manage as a community. Hopefully, the spirit of the law would be taken into consideration. This is an example of an important quality of life issue in which such a board would be invaluable. I thank you all for the opportunity to address you, and I ask that you read the full statement, which has been provided to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio, did you receive a copy of her comments? Okay. Next on the list is Victoria Reese.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be here again. I want to start out by thanking the police chief for beginning to reach out. Captain Hobbs came to a P flag meeting, which was a very good start. Told me that the captain is a little nicer than he looks. So, I went over and met him today, and he was smiling. And he is, so we're hoping that this is a beginning of fostering a better relationship because there is still so much fear in the gay community with people in authority, with the police department, not necessarily this police department, but in times past. And that takes a long time when something bad has happened to get over it. And you talk to your friends, and then it grows. If you have a chance to get to meet the people in charge, it's a much easier thing to handle. And I hope that this, that's part of what this community action board is supposed to do. It is supposed to give people someone to talk to, to say you're upset, to say this, to say that, to talk about whatever they need to, to people who understand how to answer back, to people who are professionals, to social workers, to people who are trained in mental health, so they know how to deal with someone if they're upset, if they're anxious, if they're scared. And then that information can be relayed to the police, who then have an opportunity to know, okay, maybe we need to do a little bit more with this. Maybe we need to make more of a point. This is not an oversight board. This is not a board that will have any power to tell the police chief what to do, to tell the city, the town manager what to do. We are there simply to give people someone to talk to. We are also there to provide people who have training in social work, training in mediation. And these people have years and years and years of experience. No, none of them would know what it's like to be a police person. None of them would understand the stresses that they go under. We all appreciate what they go under, and we know they have some training. But their small amount of training in social work doesn't equal what someone who's worked in social work a life knows. They can work together. And I believe that the police department has tried to get funding to have social workers and people like that available to them. This board is trying to offer that to you for no money. So, it seems to me like that's a really good idea. I am a retired retail manager, and as a retail manager, I got to deal with all the customers who are unhappy. And I learned that if you stood there with a serious expression, you listened to someone, you gave them the opportunity to talk, that solved 90% of their issues, whether or not I could do what they wanted to. That's what this board is designed to do, to be there, to give people someone to talk to, relay that information to the police chief, so then he can make changes he might need to make or not, or he can explain back to this board, this is why it was done that way. Then the board can explain it back to the person who's there fostering much better communication and understanding. And on that note, the fire chief talked about the cat on the pole. That is something this board could help with because he was getting inundated with calls where people were upset that he wasn't getting his cat down off that pole. Okay, people would complain to this board. We would talk to the fire chief. The fire chief would explain back, there are electrical poles there. It's not safe for me to send people up there. You need someone who's licensed and experienced with electricity. Then the board could explain it back to the public. So, we could have perhaps made his life a little bit easier to deal with. And the resolution idea, while it sounds good, I think it is just really a way for people to say no without really saying no. This needs to have some tease to it. People need to feel it's going to be here for a while, and an ordinance is a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Bookwalter.
Good evening, councilors, mayor, town officials, and members of the community. At last week's council work session, there were some questions asked about those of us who have been working on ordinance 1335 to form a citizens advisory board. So, I'd like to address some of these questions from Mr. Leep May. First was the question, questioning of our not having lived here long enough to have insight into this community. On our committee is Stan Snyder, a town councillor, former head of the town's water department, and the go-to guy in our neighborhood if we need an ancient furnace lit. He's been here for 30 years or more. Frances Vasquez is a lifelong resident of Grant County, born and raised in the mining district and a graduate of Cobre High School, and retired from Silver Consolidated Schools. The only time she lived outside this community was during the Vietnam War, when her husband was stationed elsewhere. Ray Kressler has been here for 10 years. He and his wife Brooke owned a business downtown, and Ray now teaches at Aldo Leopold Charter School, which is a public school. He and his wife Brooke are also raising a daughter here, and I think for anyone who has a child, you know that this in itself is an investment in and showing trust for a community. George Carr retired to this community about eight years ago. He's our youngster, but I doubt he hears himself referred to very often in that term. I've been here about 44 years. Mr. Leep May asked about employment. In the mid-'80s, I taught GED classes and ESL classes at Western. This helped me connect with a part of the community that has struggled with school, language, and work. Next, I became the Main Street Project Manager. This helped me to better understand what a gamble it can be to invest one's life and one's money in a small business. From there, I returned to teaching and retired after 17 years in the Silver School system. Do I know officers, firefighters, and others by their first names? Yes, I do, and I can tell you where they sat in my classroom. Mr. Leep May referred to big-city problems that have suddenly appeared in our town. These problems may change in form over time, but we have always had them. Shortly after moving into our house on Sixth Street in 1985, someone died of a heroin overdose on D Street. About 15 years ago, a neighbor who taught me how to can died from an opioid overdose. Several years later, her daughter overdosed, same house. And when I went back to teaching in 1993, gangs and wannabes were a growing problem here, as evidenced by drive-by shootings, incessant graffiti, and some very brutal beatings of a few of my students. Our town has always struggled with the problems of any other community, just on a smaller scale. Mr. Leep May also asked what qualifications were being sought for members of the proposed advisory board. It is specified in the ordinance that every effort be made to include members with a background in social work, mental health care, law enforcement, public education, and recently added criminal law, as well as to reflect the broad and rich diversity of our community. Those of us working on this ordinance have chosen not to make personal attacks on individuals or to challenge their right to have opinions differing from ours, but rather to address the issues of how a community advisory board could benefit this community and the law enforcement officers that serve it. We need to focus on issues and not attack the worthiness of individuals who propose ideas we don't agree with.
Thank you. Next is Michael Gusto.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to address you to raise-
Could you just be greater into the microphone? Thank you.
I'm here to help raise awareness about fire issues. We have some areas in the county and around the city- We have some areas in the county and around the city that are very dense. I have some photographs that I took this afternoon during this high wind, and they've been passed around the front room. These areas are not the most dangerous in the county, perhaps, and not the state. But when we look at the suffering and the loss of life and houses, and that rippling effect and everybody's fire insurance, all those, all those people suffering, they can't even get back to their houses sometimes because there's so much toxic waste in their house, ex-house. So I'm here tonight to point out an area or two. And over the past couple of years, when I've worked with the fire department, they were wonderful to work with. They've got some wonderful programs in the county. There's the Firewise program that was instituted at Wind Canyon Estates, and also Dos Gregos. It's a fantastic program. People are encouraged through this grant to, to prune their trees to be high enough to not to spread fire quickly, cut down the grass. There's also grants to groom your area that come and go from the state. And the county has this wonderful program where they do cut and shred, where they loan the area a shredder, and you just pile it up and they take care of it for you. It's really a good program. And, you know, sometimes money could be raised to provide an incentive. Perhaps the county would consider sending letters to people who own vacant land with a lot of trees and a lot of shrubs. But those are issues for you all to concern, and I concern yourselves with. Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss the citizens advisory board topic. But first, what I would like to do is relate a past incident that seemingly has nothing to do with this, but perhaps when I go a little further, it'll be clearer. For many years, I worked as an electrical contractor here in Silver City. And at one point in the past, I had a client who remained unnamed, we will call him Greg. And I did some work for him, and he took a really long time to pay. And he paid, and after a while, he wanted me to do some more work. I said, Greg, you, you believe in, you know, we're all equal, right? You believe in equality. And he said, oh, yes, of course. I said, well, okay, last time I did the work and you eventually paid me. How about this time, you pay me and then I'll do the work? I want you to see where I'm going with this. In my 50 years, this April in Silver City, I've had mostly positive or neutral interactions with the police department. And one of the major themes that many police departments say is that, if you're not doing anything wrong, you don't have anything to fear from us. Well, I'm saying we have some equality here. With the citizens advisory board, if you're not doing anything wrong, you don't have anything to fear from the citizens advisory board that has extremely limited powers. This is a message I'm trying to deliver on equality. And I ask those members of the council that might be wavering on this to think about this. It cuts both ways. It's a matter of respect. If the public is to respect the police department, the police department has to trust the public as well. And my last thought on this is, a resolution is fairly meaningless. I think you know what you need to do if this can have any positive effect upon the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeanne Martin.
Good evening, all. Well, I am Jeanne Martin, and I have several comments to make this evening. The first is in response to a council member suggesting on February 3rd that newcomers come to Silver City and then want to change things. Well, if things need changing, as a newcomer of 29 years and four months, I'm glad we and they do work to support change when the need cries out for it. And what about those newcomers who rent and buy property, serve on boards, support local businesses, and pay taxes to support education and basic services such as the police and fire? Let us imagine Silver City for a moment as the only residence with a legitimate right to speak up had not been born here. Or had been born here. Respect for and among residents who participate in the work of community, and accessibility and accountability for those who work to keep it a safe and functioning community are essential. The proposed city ordinance for a citizens advisory board before the council this evening will help to strengthen trust among law enforcement and increase respect for the often stressful and dangerous work that they are called upon to do. Let us move forward. The ordinance should be passed into law by the council as revised by members of the city council and the community group. And thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Jepson.
I have some things that I would love for the council members to see and hear. Good evening, Mayor Lattner and council members. I am here tonight representing Indivisible Locally. It's a national citizen action group, and I'm on the immigration subcommittee. The immigration subcommittee has the goal to help families not be broken up because of policies that might exist in communities, and support immigrants in our community in general, so that they know their rights, and other community members know their rights as well. I've lived in Silver City, New Mexico, for over 30 years and have been a maternal-child home-visiting nurse for almost 30 years, almost the whole time I've lived here. I've visited undocumented families. I've visited all families having new babies in our community. And I saw how the concerted efforts that they made to raise their children in a healthy environment, they provided, they worked in jobs that helped our community to function. I also noticed that the hospital RNs that served, that cared for all of the families having children, but specifically undocumented families, that they served them equally. I also had an opportunity to see that law enforcement was respectful, and that they were not mandated at that time, my working career, to report undocumented community members to ICE or Border Patrol. So I wanted to just let you all know, what you have in front of you is a poster that our group has been distributing in places that we think might reach people that are undocumented to know what their rights are, that if they are confronted with ICE or Border Patrol, that they have the right to not talk to them. The cards that you have also say what their rights are, and that they can give these cards to an ICE or Border Patrol person. And basically, it says in English on the, you all might have received a pure English one, or one that's in Spanish on one side, so if somebody is Spanish-speaking, they can understand what it says, and then English on the other to be given to an officer. So we're distributing these in places that we think might reach people that need them. I'm here tonight to find out more. I know I talked to Mayor Lattner yesterday, and I'm hoping to hear back about what the policy, the standard policy in Silver City, in our community, is. If somebody is confronted by an ICE officer or Border Patrol, what are, or a police officer, are they required to then report them if they are undocumented? So just to get a better sense of how our community might be interacting, interfacing, given the national climate right now, as far as undocumented members of our communities. We've spoken with Sheriff Villanueva, who said he's following the Attorney General Torres' guidelines on immigration, which means they're not going to permit people to come into offices of, places of worship or schools. Superintendent Hawkins, with the Silver Schools, has sent a letter to families that say, this is unless there is a warrant, that they will not be allowing these ICE officers or Border Patrol to come into the schools. I spoke with El Fugio, who, yes, I'm tired, one more minute, who, they said, we absolutely serve everyone equally, we are not, we are not mandated to report if someone is undocumented, and we help them to get legal documentation. So we'd really like to know more what the official position is of the community, of officials in the community, and we hope to be able to continue to serve our community members that do not have documentation as well as we can. Thank you.
Next is Janet Waller Ortiz.
Good evening, councilors and distinguished members of our community. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak, and thanks for all the good you do for our city. My name is Janet Waller Ortiz, and I have lived in Silver City for 42 years. As a retired university professor, I can say that I have worked with advisory boards, and that I have found them very helpful and knowledgeable, even when they weren't experts in my field. I would like to respond to a few comments made at the work session regarding the NOI on the citizens advisory board. To be crystal clear, passing this ordinance and creating a citizens advisory board is not about punishing the current police department employees for past egregious errors. That is simply a specious argument that is not at all germane to the current discussion. This is about moving forward by creating a board to encourage and facilitate mutually respectful relationships between the police and all members of our community, and to minimize the room for errors and miscommunication among all sides. I had an interaction with Officer Lockett recently at a protest, and I found him to be very respectful, and I just wanted to mention that. He was, he was fair, balanced, and very respectful to us, just wanted to mention that. Another distraction to the subject at hand is the prejudice or stereotyping against people who may move to Silver City to make our city their home. I assure you, many do not want to remake our rural town into the places they have left behind. Let's face it, we all, no matter where we're from, want the same, no matter where we live or have lived, and that is a safe community with a police force that responds with professionalism and respect, and the ability to have input on those responses if necessary. If I heard correctly, the city's insurance deductible has now increased from 10K to 100K. That's a tenfold increase. We citizens pay the price for those higher rates. Let me suggest that a citizens advisory board who simply monitors complaints given to them might be able to spot patterns or situations that might be helpful in averting more such increases due to issues that might go unaddressed without their advice. Finally, I completely agree, there is no argument with the absolute need for confidentiality, the need to respect and adhere to police union contracts, and some basic training for the volunteers on the board. For a successful board, each member needs to understand clearly the parameters of their responsibilities and procedures. Again, it has been made abundantly clear that there can be no interference with day-to-day police activities. All that said, I fully support the ordinance in its final revised form that was made by the subcommittee that included council members and those volunteers who have worked to clarify the language of the ordinance. I do not support a resolution on this issue, because as such, it would carry no authority and would indicate a lack of seriousness about a most serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hello, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name is Andy Payne, and I live in Silver City. And I'm not going to apologize for only being here 11 years. When I heard about Silver City, I got here as soon as I could. There are many ways to view a citizens advisory board, and you've been hearing many of them. But I would like you to consider passing an ordinance, not a resolution, for a citizens That's as part of your town's insurance policy. When Nikki Baskin was killed, there was no CAB in place for her to reach out to. If there had been, it would have provided her with one more path for her to make her fears known. Would she have used it? Would it have saved her life? No one can say. But what we can say is, it's a possibility it would have saved her life. It might have. The city council that time, all their faith and trust in the police department, the police itself, removed any officers that had mental health issues and posed a possible threat to others. That faith and trust was misplaced. A police officer slipped through their policies and procedures, and Nikki Baskin lost her life. A police officer lost his life. And the city was held accountable and paid a $10 million settlement. What would it have cost for the city to have had a citizens advisory committee in place at that time? Nothing. It would, that might have prevented the tragedy, would have cost nothing. But what could it have saved? Please don't make that same mistake again. Establish a citizens advisory board as a form of insurance and decrease, decrease the odds of this, of history repeating itself. Thank you.
Next is Karen Cruz.
Good evening, city council members, mayor, citizens of Silver City. My name is Karen Cruz, and I stand before you, not just for myself, but for every citizen who has been wronged, ignored, and failed by a system that is supposed to protect us. I am here to expose corruption, demand accountability, and ensure that justice is not a privilege for the few, but a right for all. Systemic corruption, I have proof. I have collected overwhelming evidence of misconduct at every level of our justice system. The police department, the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, and even the judiciary. I have proof that my due process rights were violated. I have proof that officers failed to investigate before filing charges. I have proof that the legal system here has been weaponized against the very people it was meant to serve. And yet, instead of taking action, those in power are actively trying to silence me. Retaliation, intimidation, they are scared of the truth. Because I refuse to be silenced, I have been met with retaliation, deflection, and intimidation tactics. I, when I demand justice, I am accused of harassment. When I call out officials for failing to act, they tell me they need time to investigate, as if my constitutional rights are open for debate. as if my constitutional rights are open for debate. When I announce legal action, they suddenly refuse to respond. This is the exact behavior of a corrupt system that thrives on silence and submission. But when, but let me make one thing clear. I will not be silenced. This is bigger than me. This could happen to you. This is not just about me. If this system can railroad an innocent citizen like me, it can and it will do the same to anyone in this room. Your neighbor, your daughter, your son. A corrupt system does not discriminate. It only seeks control. This is why I am standing here today, because when injustice goes unchallenged, it spreads like a disease, and I refuse to let that happen to my town, to my people. Legal action and demands, time to act. I have already escalated this to federal authorities. Complaints have been filed with the DOJ, the FBI, the Attorney General's Office, and the New Mexico Supreme Court Judicial Standards Commission. I have legal filings in process, in progress, against those who have violated my rights, and I will not stop until justice is served. But Silver City does not need to wait for the federal government to intervene. You, the leaders of this town, have the power to act now. I am calling for the immediate dismissals of wrongful charges filed against me and anyone facing similar injustices, a full independent investigation into law enforcement misconduct, judicial corruption in Silver City, the termination of officers who have failed in their duties, and the implementation of safeguards to ensure this never happens again. You may try to dismiss me. You may try to silence me. You may try to intimidate me. But I promise you this, I am not going anywhere. I am here, I am awake, and I am watching. This town belongs to the people, not to the corrupt few who abuse their positions. I want every single citizen listening to me now. You have rights, you have power, and you can fight back. The corruption in Silver City ends here, and if those in power won't fix it, then we will. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for your input. I've had a request for a ten-minute break. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Cunnell?
I vote for a ten-minute recess.
Is there a second? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a ten-minute break, and we'll be back at three minutes after seven, so please be back and ready-